Okay, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Uh, Mr. Carter, if you want to make your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. If you would, uh, everybody put their name on my sign-in sheet so we can get credit for everybody being here and then listening to us talk about this other stuff. I'll go pretty quick.
You can do it.
Pretty cut and dry. Uh, what's going on is a local manufacturing company, uh, Innovative Formulations and La Chee are out here making nutritional supplements. They're apparently, uh, who would think it, they're one of the leading folks in the industry. Yeah, a great facility out here, hope to expand things. Anyway, the state has offered these folks two separate packages. One is $240,000, uh, and the other is 700, uh, $40,000 and $75,000. They're looking to employ 15, 46, uh, about 60 people, and, uh, they're gonna buy equipment with this money. Typically, this is federal money that comes down to the state block grant. State puts it out there for various projects. One of them is economic development, the other's community development. There's also an outside chance with the resolutions, the public hearing we're having tonight, to do these applications for the economic development, as well as the House of Hope cottages is also looking for a grant that may be coming around in March. The city's eligible to have a grant. The city's eligible to have as many of these economic development grants as possible. It's rare that we get the city of Harrison a grant because Harrison doesn't qualify for any of these CBT grants. So, we know we're gonna move forward with these ED grants and the resolutions tonight. But I want everybody to understand there's an outside chance we can put in an application using this same stuff for the House of Hope cottages. Yeah, yeah. And we've been talking to those folks a good bit, so.
Excuse me, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Who do you represent?
Ah, sorry, it's a bad habit. I'm the Senior Grants Administrator with the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District. Sorry, I've been doing this a lot.
No problem, no problem.
Sometimes.
Thank you.
And so, uh, what we've got tonight is these resolutions, uh, looking for city support on them, move this application through. Typically, the city, uh, is obligated to run the checking account, which, which we've done before with the House of Hope. It's a standalone account. We make sure all balances are good to go. The federal level with the audit money is up to 75,000 now, and I don't think we'll reach that, so we shouldn't be in audit or anything like that. So, a pretty straightforward deal. And, uh, the last thing we want to do is, uh, basically remind the folks, and we stole this fact. Now, when I read these off, know that this is a list from the 1974. Ten Essentials for a Good Community: Quality Education System, Access to Healthcare, Parks and Recreational Facilities, Solid Infrastructure, Affordable Housing, Quality Law Enforcement and Crime Protection, Good Leadership, Diverse Economy, Willness to Accept Outside Assistance, Usually in Aesthetic Land Scaffolding. We stole that from 1974. Still pretty relevant, huh? And, uh, the more things change, the more they stay the same. We appreciate y'all's support on the resolutions tonight. Uh, if there's any questions about the economic development project that we're working on with La Chee and Innovative Formulations, or even with the House of Hope cottages, we're a little bit versed on theirs, we would request everybody in the public to, to, uh, we'll circulate this.
Did you get paid for that, the number of signatures on that or something?
No, but actually, believe it or not.
Sounds like we did.
No kidding. With, not so much when we're doing economic development, because those are already, a lot of effort to put those together, but community development projects like the House of Hope cottages, if it comes right down to we match somebody else, and it comes right down to how many signatures we got on that public hearing for, will make the difference. So, if they see 15 signatures versus 35 or so, they're gonna go with the one with the motion, community support. That's one reason we hold these things in front of a captured audience. Yeah, so that we can kind of get prayer for that. I wish I did get paid for it like that, man. Man, I'd be beat to the bushes. Voting campaigns.
Well, I know you. But do you want to go through these individually, or, um, you think, are the council comfortable with these resolutions?
I can probably answer questions as you're, you're addressing them.
Okay. Okay, as we go through them tonight?
Yeah, that'd be fun, and I'm, I'm not going anywhere in a hurry. I'll be hanging around, seeing how it all goes.
So, Jay Ullacher is our administrator, right? This goes through the liaison.
Yes. Yeah, we, we pretty much take care of all that, uh, the application, the paperwork, make sure the city stays in compliance. Uh, financially, we make sure that the city has the appropriate documentation to meet all the audit requirements and, and lots of stuff like that, and that.
There's plenty of paperwork, other paperwork, other than this. I've seen it come across the desk, signing many of the things, so. But, our Northwest Economic Development, they do a great job, and I appreciate it through today. You know, that's money that's going, coming into our community jobs and everything else. I can't say enough about it. We are applying for some other grants, uh, and it helps work with them, I'll tell you that number one. It helps work with them. They're a great, great organization.
We're excited about the way the Innovative Formulations and La Chee are moving forward in a rapid manner. Should be a pretty quick expansion out there, the new facilities will go along with that. We appreciate y'all's support and, uh, with passing the resolutions and things.
Does the anti-displacement, uh, uh, resolution, does that because of the La Chee and Innovative, or does that have more to do with the House of Hope?
Uh, we, we got the, the anti-displacement thing, uh, back when they were doing urban development in the seventies, and they were destroying low neighborhood, low-income neighborhoods and putting in, uh, airports and things like that. So, uh, you know, it's a Napoleonic trick, let's get rid of our slum and blight, I paid it over. You know, Napoleon did that really well in Paris. And so, we have this law to prevent that from happening. If we spend all these dollars to displace people, we have to relocate them. So, know that we're not ever spending dollars to displace people.
They are, they're involved in that. So, the displacement's in place, so that.
Specifically for this project?
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
Okay, I will have to open it up to the, the council and the audience, being this is a public hearing. Does anybody have anything on this topic to say?
Hoping to go forward and do good things.
Jay, you have to estimate the amount for the House of Hope potentially?
Uh, under 200,000, but close to, is my initial estimate right now. The, the grant limit's about 200,000. They prefer us not to apply for the full. So, if we can work at where we're showing that they've got a lot of other support and a little bit of help from a grant.
You made a public now, so that's great. It's great, that'll be another great addition to our community when they get that money, if they get money.
And it is competitive grant, and we're gonna do our best.
Yes, yes.
They're out there.
Okay, anybody else have anything, since we are in the public hearing?
What was the amount for the La Chee?
250, 250 and 75?
Uh, so Innovative Formulations and La Chee is 240,000 and 75,000.
Oh, okay.
So, and these are targeted equipment. Typically, it's something that, solid and fixed, the state, if they go belly up, the state has a piece of equipment, they can go back and give it and lay it back.
That's what I mean by application, I think that's what I saw, the equipment purchase and this way.
Right. Yeah, mostly just equipment installation, usually so.
Okay, there being no other discussion in this public hearing, consider it closed.
All right, now, you can answer questions on resolutions. Thank you all.
Welcome, everybody, to our, what is this, January? Uh, almost February, is it? January City Council meeting. At this time, uh, I will have a clerk call roll.
Brian Herring, President. Mary Jean Krieger, President. Mitch Magnus, President. David Wilson, President. Brian Oswald, President. Keith Kirkpatrick, President. Joel Williams, President. Dana Taylor, President.
Could you please stand, and, uh, Mr. Herring will lead us in the prayer. Please remain standing for the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today, Lord, we ask for wisdom and direction and guidance as you do the business of this great city. We pray that we would do it all in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
By the blessings of the light of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before you have, uh, two sets of minutes, December 5th and January 2nd, and I'll entertain a motion for approval on those minutes. I'll move.
Second.
We'll have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of December 5th and January 2nd. In discussion, there being no suggestion, all in favor, by aye?
Aye.
Or the whole thing. Motion carried. There's a little down in the department reports, and, uh, Mr. Phillips wanted to give an update on his department. Yeah, floor, Mr. Phillips.
A few quick updates. On the main roof station, we have a project, we are nearing completion with that. All of the repairs to the concrete and pipe from the wetland are complete. The new liner has been installed. We're kind of going through a, a cure period, letting that liner cure out before we, uh, take it off bypass and return things to normal operation. We're scheduled to do that as early as next Monday, but it may be later in the week, just depending on how that liner cures. Creek and Creek Mineral Standards, I sent a not very short email to everybody a while back. Um, things have progressed as expected. I'll be going to Lenoir Rock tomorrow for the Bush Control and Ecology Commission meeting. Hopefully, the rules will be finalized at that time in Arkansas. Unfortunately, after that, it does go to the EPA for their review. And I do not know, given the current state of things with some of the federal agencies, how quick they're gonna get to it, or if they're even gonna communicate with us. But, it will be long in Arkansas after tomorrow, unless something goes terribly wrong with the commission. So, we'll be somewhat out of the, out of danger on those, uh, those issues with minerals and creek, but EPA could come back at some time and, and slow us down. Corrosion control, last year, we had gone through the approval process to implement corrosion protection with ortho phosphate in our water system. Let everybody know, we've put that in definitely on hold. Carroll Moon Water District is actually exploring options to do their own corrosion control, which would benefit us. Um, so, I don't know how quick they're gonna get to it. We have, from a regulatory standpoint, until November of 2018, they have something in place.
If they just, if they do it, will they change the writing?
Yes. Um, yeah, what, and, I mean, they don't have any set numbers right now. At the last board meeting, I think it was 2 cents per thousand would be the cost if we make corrosion control. What they've asked their engineers to do is go talk to the member cities and see if that's successful for everybody. They'll regroup at the next board meeting, and then probably make a decision at that point whether to start the design or construction. If they do proceed with it, that will, uh, at least put off our need to do ortho phosphate. They, the health department says that would be our regulatory requirement for corrosion control, so then what we do is we monitor things, uh, for a few years. Depending on those results, we either have to look at additional corrosion control specific to Harrison, or if things are working, and we're good to go. Also, Carroll Moon Water District, our rebate from last year will be 88,480 dollars.
Big splash to the water.
Yeah, it's, uh, you know, basically, they, any extra money that they have at the end of the year that they don't put into a specific reserve, they rebate back to their customers based off of, you know, it's based off the percentage of water that you purchase from them. So, they have 213,000 total available in our shares, almost 88,500 of that. And I also wanted to let council know that we are willing to be confident about the next infrastructure program as we go through this year. That will be up for vote in November of 2018.
Before that, we'll probably vote on it before that.
Go to the public for vote. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Vote in 2018.
Yeah.
My hope is to have our first public hearing in November of 2017. We're gonna have a list for the mayor at some point next month, for mayor list. Hopefully, we'll be putting that information in council's hands sometime in, in March so we can start looking at these public projects, hearing it down, get it fit into the amount of money that we expect. I think for that program, we're probably gonna expect about, what, 18 million over the course of the year period, maybe more, depending on how sales tracks, tracks over that period. And I think that's it. Will somebody ask questions, please?
Up in coming months, I'm gonna hear a lot out of several different people on our infrastructure for our next book. I may speak a little bit if I want to. There will be quite a bit of money put in out of that infrastructure into Gotham Drive, uh, that being almost, well, in excess of 4 million dollars. But we see that as a ongoing, well, it may become an issue, and we don't want it to become an issue, because we're gonna have the whole, total school system right there. And safety concerns are our biggest thing, and, uh, we think that should be one of our leading issues in our infrastructure. Also, we'll commit $2 million out of that to somehow get the federal government to give us 35 to 40 million dollars to redo our current bypass. Make it wider, safer, more accessible, user-friendly. Uh, a lot of issues on our, our bypass right now. We'll fund some of those. And a lot of the other projects will have to do with paving also. We will not spend very much money out of that infrastructure in our water and sewer, since we're pretty solvable in our water and sewer department now. We do not have to buy, uh, safety equipment such as police vehicles or fire equipment out of that fund anymore. So, uh, we will, what we'll be pushing, the way, the way that's been working hard is that we've been working hard on it. It will be a good infrastructure for the next eight years. And, uh, we'll, we'll have to be talking a lot about that in the upcoming year, especially this year. So, that's kind of on the table. I have more things put on the table, and we'll put them on there right now. I'll wait till next month to put them on there, so. All right, we'll move on. And I think Mr. Viker wants to address the council, if everybody's got their finances.
Uh, you know, I will put the December financial statements out on Google Docs as well. Um, I, this, needs to be preface, this is not the final December financial statement. This is your end. We do always do some adjustments. We do that for audit purposes. It's a little different than just a regular financial report, and at some point in time, we will have a budget slash accounting 101 or fund financial statements. It's very different than just your regular profit and loss statement, where you just have revenues and expenses. And this is broken out into many different departments, and that's broken up by the different funds that we have. Um, I'm just hitting the highlights here on the December financial statements. You'll notice, uh, the general fund ended up with a really, really good year. We are gonna be in excess of 400,000 dollars of surplus, um, and that's compared to the budget that we had as a negative 50,000 dollars as a deficit. So, um, the department heads, the mayor, all the guys, or everybody, the men and women that have worked on the finance portion of it budget-wise, did a great job, um, on their expenses, their, the revenue that comes in, it's pretty much, it's not, it's not up to us, it's up to the people, if they spend money, or, or what else could be going on throughout the year. The biggest increase that we actually saw was in the county, um, sales tax, um, when, I'm kind of anticipating it to, you know, the Dollar Generals that have been going out in county, Harps, they went out, uh, just south of Belton. Um, I don't know how, you guys are seeing the county going, but the, uh, sales tax is picking upwards in both county and city, but county especially, we noticed that. And that's where a lot of it comes from. Our property tax did go up as well. It's the first time since I've been here that it's been over a million dollars. We're in the 1,007,000, so, just barely. And I don't know that we would've hit that if the mall hadn't sold, but, um, it did, so, it's good to hit that million dollar number, especially with that part coming. Um, everything else, that's, that's the main highlights. The, the fire and police fund, they're growing, um, which is great, especially with them being able to purchase stuff and getting the fire grid in, and police pay grid, sorry, getting that implemented, but also being able to put that, put back some money for future equipment slash buildings. We will potentially look at taking some more money and paying off on the fire truck loan. That might happen next month, we might bring something to you, or sometime in the coming months, uh, just to get that paid off where we don't pay as much interest. This is just a savings mechanism, if we have the money to do that, we'd like to get that paid off sooner rather than later. Aside from the financial statements, um, our IRS audit is almost complete. We had one of those, it started back in November. We will pay, have to pay some money. I don't know what that dollar amount is yet, um, and it's due to the fact that we did the right thing and started paying everybody the W-2 wage versus the 1099 wage. That's what kicked it off, but since we did the right thing, they decided they needed to come in and tell us that we need to pay them back down. So, um, we will owe some money. Since we did self, self-adjust and correct it, it will be a lesser amount than if they just caught it and said, hey, you guys need to fix this. So, um, going through that should be done within the next week, and then I'll, I'll let you guys know a final amount.
Rough idea of the exposure?
10 to 20,000 is what I would anticipate, and it's all due to back payroll taxes. There might be some 1099 issues, but they will be very few and far between. I did learn a few things as well, so, everything going forward will be corrected. Uh, and the water and sewer audit is almost completed, um, from 2015, so we will hopefully get that. We've, we've been working with the auditors there, and it should be completed anytime now, and as soon as it does, I will get you all that information as well.
Any questions from Mr. Viker? I will say, I will say, uh, the great thing that comes out of this budget is our department heads, they watch very closely on the expenditures. I can't say if they don't, I might go pissed on them, but I haven't had to. Believe it or not, they, they do a real good job on it. And he's a kind of, uh, ran over the, what's, what it's built on, 433,000 dollar surplus. If you'll look out there to the far right, it does have a cover sheet on it now. You do have, everybody got the cover sheet back? I don't know if speaking out of hand. But right down, our reserve is 3,217,000. That's about six months of reserve, and that's where we need to be saving. We're in real good check financially. If our trend continues, at the last two or three years, and I'm probably gonna reiterate a little bit on this next month in my remarks to the city, but, uh, we're looking great going forward. And with the things we got going on, I, I can't see anything negative that's gonna happen to our city. I think financially, we're gonna be in great shape, and that we may be able to do a few things that we probably needed to do several years ago, and, uh, moving forward. Thank you, Luke.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on now. Oh, Mr. Wood. Does anybody, does any of the other committees, I'll go down to them. Ms. Wade, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Okay. Mr. Magnus?
Luke covered it all, uh, like I say, hot off the press, and I think, uh, look at them. We did want to put this cover sheet on the front, let you quickly see where we're at, and, uh, that's pretty much it.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Crager?
I think the chiefs will be taking care of that.
Crager, well, he's up.
Thank you, guys. Last year, we put in for a COX grant, which is a very difficult grant to put in. We have put in for that numerous years in the past, and have always not been, or always been denied. This year, we put in for two community policing officers that will go out to our community and will do community policing, something that we started three years ago within our department, something we wanted to continue on and focus more on to. We were awarded this grant, uh, for two officers. What's great about the grant, it's a three-year grant, federal government paying up to 250,000 dollars. Our portion's 110,000 dollars. And it's a step grant, so what happens, the first year, we pay 20%. So, for two officers, the first year, we're only paying 22,000 dollars. Next year, we paid 30%, which is 33,000, and third year, we paid 50%, which is 55,000, so 110,000. The federal government will pay a first year 91,000, then 86,000, and a final year 71,000. So, it's a great opportunity for us to get two officers and assign them to do community policing. So, there's a way for me to sign the paperwork to accept the grant, but we are in the middle of our budget time. We want to bring it up, make sure how much money we have, obviously. We weren't sure first of the budget year how we were looking, but obviously financially, we're in a good position, I think. And, as you all know, we can't fund two officers for three years for 110,000 dollars. So, I was just asking for your approval to accept the grant. And if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to.
I may, I may add to what he just said there. Uh, this, this money that he's asking for will come out of the police department. It will come out of the police department, uh, we'd say are in good shape on, but, uh, we can't. We have done these grants in the past, they save us a lot of money, uh, they get us two officers, and they're trained, and if we want to put them to work later on, we'll put them to work.
I noticed in his, uh, you know, award letter, that we have to, uh, keep the.
Retain.
We have to retain them for 12 months following, the one year, an extra year will be co-hire status.
Yes. But with that growth we have going on, I think on the fourth year, we'd probably be asking for more officers, you know, to be honest with you?
Yeah, that's what I was assuming.
So, I think in four years, we'll be easily able to keep those officers without any problems, especially with, I think, the growth that we're gonna see in our city.
And I was gonna ask also, why, why would you think they would give us two, um, is there a particular reason that we were that fortunate?
We, we put in for two, and as you can see with the award letter, we're one of the only ones in Arkansas, it's only four, I think, departments, entire state of Arkansas even was awarded any officers, and we had the highest amount awarded of the 250,000 between those four officers.
Are we using those, I think they said something about, it's supposed to be officers that need, we're gonna retain or that were, we want officers that are no longer officers. Now, are we using those as school resource officers, or are they just gonna be reserve police officers, or are we full-time police officers?
They'll be full-time assigned to community policing. That's the only thing they'll do. Right now, when we have special events, we bring our school resource officers and elder officers to work those events, so we're pulling from one to work in an event. So, with the community policing, we'll be able to lead my officers where they need to be, allow them to work. Plus, they're gonna be going around to our bigger businesses, putting training on for their employees, for safety, and they'll be at all our trade shows, they'll be out in our communities, trolling, so, we're gonna be a lot of use out of them. I just haven't had the manpower to put chess officers for only that.
Mr. Ware, he said he needed approval, so we need a motion to accept or?
We have a motion, well, all we need is a motion for Mr. Wood to sign off on this grant.
Second.
Motion, and a second. Any further discussion from the council? There being none, all of them, better by aye?
Aye.
All of them, whole thing. Mr. Wood, you have it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, we have talked about the noise on the, down there, and actually, that came in a different direction, and, uh, unless somebody else wants to bring. in a different direction, and unless somebody else wants to bring it back to the table, now we know what direction we're going in. Hopefully, we can help these people in this area. That's the number one thing, and get situation ready. But we will work on that, definitely. Okay, I'm gonna move down into ordinance. Hold, I skipped up. Oh, that surprise, surprise. Sorry. Okay. I've talked a little bit about waiving the billing permit fees on the mall. I don't know if you were here then when we talked about that. It entails about 108,000 square feet of billing permit fees, and that total being $24,840. I may come back to the council. There may be a possibility of some more, but that is only because it's in our office. Those billing permit fees cannot be waived by any individual. They can only be waived by the council, by vote of the council. And we talked about that, and if anybody's got any further questions on it, we're glad to answer. I will entertain a motion that allows Mr. Phillips to waive those fees.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Thank you. Okay. Have I missed anything else?
Yep.
You're good. Oh, Mr. Oswald, I didn't have to, you got it.
I thought you covered it.
No. Mr. Tager, anything else to get into all these other ones?
You know, also.
You okay?
Yeah.
All right, we'll move in. We'll have to cover each one of these individually. You actually wanna read all these, or do? Oh, you don't wanna read all of them, okay. I can see the look on your face. Okay, we'll go to number one. Does everybody have these in front of them? Resolution authorizing the City of Harrison to submit an ACEDP grant application to the state. I'll entertain a motion for this, to adopt this resolution. Y'all reading it? I know y'all. Mr. Stotter, is he still here?
Yes.
We will ask, answer any questions you have about it.
Was that a motion to approve?
I'll have a motion is second, to adopt this resolution. Any discussion on it?
Do we have to vote on each one of these separately?
Yes, yes, we do.
I try.
Okay, there being no discussion on this resolution, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Okay, we'll move on to a resolution establishing anti-displacement plan. And I think you talked a little bit about that, we wouldn't be building a building over somebody's house.
Right. We're not displacing.
Make a motion to approve the resolution establishing anti-displacement plan.
I second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion on this? There being none, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. All opposed, same. Motion against. Okay, we'll move on to the third one. It's a resolution approving the City of Harrison's fair housing and equal opportunity policy. And this actually has been worked several times, and it conforms to our city housing, does it not, Mrs.?
Yes, it does.
It is, okay. And actually, she checked over all these to make sure we're not out of compliance, so one way or the other, so with our housing.
I have a motion.
Make a motion. The motion been made a half-second. I have a second. Any discussion on this? There being no discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. A resolution establishing a civil rights enforcement plan.
Now, this resolution is typically aimed at ensuring that your local law enforcement is well-trained in civil disobedience, which we know for a fact they are. State Arkansas trains their officers very well in this aspect. We have every confidence that your local law enforcement is handling the civil rights issues in lawful manner.
Make a motion to accept the resolution.
Civil rights.
I second.
I have a motion is second for this resolution. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Okay. The fifth one involved in this one is a resolution designating administrative services. And this, more or less, you're giving me the right to sign off.
Yeah, and we don't have any idea what the state will pay us to do these projects.
Yeah.
But the state does budget funds to pay our administrative duties.
And that'd be on top of 240, and we have to use it.
Yeah, usually, it'd be a little above what they're talking about here, the 240 to $75,000. So we don't, the state won't.
And do we pay that?
No, actually, the state has all that. Your also obligation is running a checking account like we did for House of Ho, so it's as minimal as I can make it to you guys. But still, by law.
Is it on top of our federal, the federal amount of money?
Yeah.
Is that included in that?
Yeah, we're at that 750 threshold for 2200 these days, so.
I know, but we just approved 91, too, so I've got.
Yeah, but we're, we make it close. If, if it rains on us, we'll be really good.
Luke doesn't want to have another officer.
I understand. That's what we do. Sometimes success brings a little trouble.
It does, it does. That's all right. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for this resolution. I have a motion is second. Discussion. There being none, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Okay.
Mayor Castle, thank Governor.
Thank you, thank you. Put this money to work.
I'll do my best.
Okay, all right.
I'll be hanging around for the rest of the meeting here.
Okay, we're gonna get into our wastewater pre-treatment. Man, I'm getting tired of reading it. I think this one will be reading in soon. Why am I reading?
You get the ordinances?
He gets the ordinances.
Oh, you get the ordinances? Okay.
Get all the.
Get all the. The resolution endorsing the continued implement, implementation of a wastewater pre-treatment program for the publicly owned treatment works, PLTW of Harrison, Arkansas. And if you've got any questions on this resolution, we've got a young man sitting right over here, Mr. Phillips, be glad to answer. Pretty self-explanatory that we'll confirm, and we will make sure everything's on the up and up.
Just basically, housekeeping, I had them asked for by the ADEQ as part of our annual pre-treatment review. Last time we did this was 1998. They just want something a little more, a little more current.
I'll make the motion.
I've just been trying to give these other guys a chance.
Yeah, they're all quiet on this side. Okay, I have a motion there, second.
Second.
I have a motion is second. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Okay. Okay, the next one. A resolution approving an emergency operations plan, authorizing and directing the mayor to approve revisions to the emergency operation plan, pinnances and annexes, and to approve functional and hazard civic plans that may be needed to supplement the emergency operation plan for the City of Harrison. And I will, Mr. Raggen, I want you to stand up. This young man here has done a great amount of work on this, so don't disappoint him. Martin, I'm not giving you any credit.
He's done most of it.
It's all work on it. Sorry. I don't know why I want to call you Raggen, and you're leaving saying something. I'm sorry.
That's what I'm saying.
But actually, we have a plan now. We've needed a plan for a long time. It's a good plan. If anybody's had a chance to read it, I have. I will already bring some revisions. I don't have them tonight, but we have some revisions already, but we can bring those to at a later date. I'll entertain a motion to approve this plan.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second. I have a motion is second. Any discussion on this? There being none, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next resolution. A resolution establishing order of succession for Officer the Mayor to ensure continuity of business. This comes from the State Legislative Office Audit Department. Actually, if I cannot serve, it moves to the city clerk. If he cannot serve, it goes to Director of Public Works, which is, which Phillips. Then if he cannot serve, it goes to Mr. Fiker. And then the last step is, if we're all in the land of Oz by tornado or something like that, the council better be around, and they'll have to appoint somebody. Last step.
Would that be by abrogation?
I think it'd be by whoever you wanted to vote, I'd say. But anyway, that, that is this resolution, and hopefully, we don't ever have to use it, but it's there in case we do.
Make a motion that we accept the resolution.
I second.
Motion is two seconds.
I'm sorry, if, but like, if you're just out of town, I think the last meeting said Dean would serve.
Okay, this is a different deal. If I was incapacitated or something, he will, he will serve as a CEO of the city. And if he can't serve, it moves on down. It moves on. Because that, there has to be a director in the city somewhere.
And we're simply taking the place of council leaders.
Yeah.
Jeff, you don't get any ideas.
Okay, I have a motion is, did I have a motion is second?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? There being none, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same.
Aye. I'm just getting in the middle. I disagree with the resolution.
Well, there's one no.
One no. It's been revocating.
Oh, God. Yeah, it is. Trouble is, we're getting, it's gonna get more and more once we get these up.
You think it goes to senior council members?
No, 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 no. I agree with the order. I just go, no, just be like.
Okay, now we're moving in, we're moving into the ordinances.
Well, now Ben gets to read. Thank God.
Yeah, he's tired of listening to me. But first one is the billing and fire code ordinance. Need copy?
I want.
Okay, we can, I need a first, entertain a motion to put it on its first reading, but...
By Tyloin.
Okay.
We've learned a little bit.
Okay, you left that.
I second. I second.
Okay, I have a motion, put it on its first reading by Tyloin, and a second. I need a, I need a discussion on. Okay, we're gonna go into discussion mode on this one.
You don't want to discuss this, you want to talk.
Okay, anybody, does anybody have discussion on these new codes? We have, this one being billing codes, if our permission, we have both of our code enforcers here, in case anybody's getting a question about it. Okay, there being no questions.
Wade, why are we doing this? We are updating to the most current version of Arkansas Fire Prevention Code. We did, we did this update somewhat loosely a couple of years ago. This is a more complete ordinance that adopts several local things specific to Harrison that was requested by the fire department. There's no changes to any current fire permit or building permit fees as they already charged today. And I will tell you, there, we do need to make change to what has been presented. Clint has, has asked to add some language before we fully adopt this to include a commercial burn permit, correct?
Correct.
So we can't put it on its first reading and make those changes before we get to council next time. Like I say, there's no, it's just updating our codes. We haven't done this, it should be done more periodically, but this is more housekeeping.
Is that, Wade, you said some of the fees aren't changing? Is that what you said?
Not, not compared to what we're currently charging, though.
Oh, okay. Well, I just printed off, I was looking at the fees a little ago. It looks like some of the fees are different.
That's a different code that we'll get to next.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I think it is. It's got annuity, it's got carnivals and fairs, $50 here and $100 here. I just, this is what I printed off the website, and I was like, I shouldn't probably go.
No, I think the website's up to date.
The website is not up to date. When we, when you guys pass this, we will, we will update the website. We talked to Christine about it, and adding, like, we passed the commercial burning and all that. We're gonna update all of that.
Okay, so the fees, like, they're here and are, you give prices.
The fees, the ones you said for $100, those have been risen two years ago, and they initially looked at this. So we have a currently changed in.
Absolutely, okay. In this code, are there further implications for schools?
No.
Great.
Any other discussion? Mr. Yonis?
Uh, you want me to talk on?
Okay, okay. This being ordered, I'll have to have a first call.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Vina Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Eugene Creeker?
Yes.
Chris Magnus?
Yes.
David Wilson?
Yes.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
And ordinance replacing chapter 11.04, 11.16, and 11.20 of the city code of Harrison, Arkansas regarding the building code, fire prevention code, and residential code. Okay, we've already talked about not putting the ordinance on its second, start reading, so we will, this will be back on the table next month. Unless somebody wants to hit that, but I think Wade talked about that. Okay, we'll move on to the second ordinance we have here, and that's a lack of codes. And I'll entertain a motion to put it on its first reading by whatever.
Tyloin.
Okay.
Some move.
Second.
I have a motion is second, and on the first reading by Tyloin. Okay, we're going into discussion mode on this one. This one I do think has some fee, does this one have a fee change?
Yes.
Sort of. They, has fee changes to what is listed in the code that was originally adopted 20-plus years ago. But at some point, the city did increase those fees, so we need to actually get the code updated to what's at some point starting to be in charge. That's just a summary of what was written into the code, and then what the, what we're looking at updating the code to. And then what the, what we're looking at updating the code to. I think really the only fee that's going to increase from what has been charged for the last seven or eight years, I believe, is the annual permit fee. Which is basically, industries pay for annual permits if they have electricians on staff. That way they don't have to come pull a separate permit every time that they do work. That means electrical expansion. And then the reason we're doing this update is to get to the most current electrical code, which is also incorporated into the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code that were, it was in previous ordinance. And a lot of what we've changed is we've removed a lot of things from what was in the code. We used to have to, we used to have a board that issued electrician license specific to the city of Harrison. I don't think that's happened here in a long, long time. So we need to get that pulled out of the code because there's state licensure now. So we just require electricians to have your state licensure. And it sort of cleans up, cleans up some things and gets it updated to two thousand, two thousand fourteen code, which is the most current.
So you're saying we're already actually charged this separate annual permit fee. We'd already been charging that somehow.
Yeah, we're already at twenty-five dollars on temporary coal fees. So Jeremy, were there any other that, that really changed from what's current?
Other than that, no.
I have to ask, how does the fee get changed without approval?
Could tell you, I wasn't here.
I mean, I'm just curious how that occurs.
We have a list of fees down there. When I was going through codes, I realized there were a lot of things that we needed up there.
I'm curious what the non-permitted work fee is.
That means if they start doing the work, electrical work that needs a permit, then we catch them. So they get that fee on top of the actual permit fee.
Good catch.
Okay, any further discussion on this ordinance? Is any, are we planning on changing this one, or are you going to wait on this one?
I'm not going to change it. I don't, I don't think that's going to take us necessarily. It's probably not a huge hurry. We can wait and watch them together, so we'll have to do the other two readings next month. That's fine. And just, just to let you know, I'll be doing the same thing with our mechanical code, plumbing code. And I think there's a fuel code that we've got to do the same update for. I just decided to start with these two.
Okay, any further discussion on this? I'll have to call the room.
Dina Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
David Wilson?
Yes.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes. An ordinance replacing chapter eleven point one two of the city code of Harrison, Arkansas, regarding electrical codes.
Thank you all. That will also be placed on next week. Okay. We got to hear those real good things. Well, okay, yeah, yeah. Okay, next, next two moved down there and do business. Actually, this is kind of my fault in here. I thought we could do this by up and down both. Mr. Yonis corrected me on that. It has to be by ordinance. So we've got an ordinance for a bid waiver, and by the way, these are only single-read ordinances. And that, the first one being a waiver on accounting software. And if you want, I will ask first for a motion.
I'll make a motion to put it on its reading. I guess it's not first reading, but I'll just.
Yes, second that. I have a motion in a second, put it on its first reading. Going to discussion here a little bit though on this one. Luke, actually is the one that's needing this. And if you've got any questions on it about that software, the waiver needing to do this, you can direct it to him.
I think he's actually talked about this at previous meetings, so I think we're pretty aware of that.
Well, just so the public's aware, let's go ahead and say it.
We're up. Luke, you're going to tell them about the software we're needing.
We currently have a VSNA software for utility billing and for cash receiving. If we are actually doing this proposal for the same software, it only will be the accounting, accounts payable, payroll side of it as well. These two are, this software will talk to with each other. It's the only type of software that we could give that can do that.
So interface better?
Yes. And I apologize, I thought it would cost eighty thousand and it was seventy nine million.
If you notice, he gave you a sheet of paper and told us there. He's already saved us some money, like I say. Good account will save money.
Will they be able to get the licensing to coincide on the software we already have and the new software?
It will. I mean, it's, it's not going to be any cheaper really on the annual licensing fee, but apparently we're paying roughly the same amount. And this year, we actually paid a little more just because we had QuickBooks and this other software, the same pipeline that would be utility billing.
What's ongoing maintenance per year?
On this one, it is, I'll have to put that in there. So this half will be fifty-six hundred. And right now, we're paying forty, four hundreds for QuickBooks.
Any further questions on this? There being none, you want to call over?
Brad? Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
David Wilson?
Yes.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes. An ordinance approving waiver of bidding for accounting department data processing software. We need a motion to adopt.
I make a motion that we adopt.
Second. I have a motion for adoption, and then a second. Any discussion on this? There being none, the clerk will have to call Rome again. Sorry.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
David Wilson?
Yes.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Luke, do you want to disinfect your, if we don't pass the emergency clause, it cannot be, your purchase cannot be ordered until thirty days.
The sooner we can get it in here, the better, but it's not going to affect our information data.
You need to go ahead and get it. I'll make, I'll entertain a motion.
Especially if it concerns payroll.
I don't know. I like the way it's working.
I'll make that motion. Motion to adopt emergency clause, there a second.
Second.
Okay, I have a second. There is no discussion on that, I think. The clerk can call. Know what to do on that one? Okay. All in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Hey, that's going to save us a lot more money in the long run. And that's just one step forward in our IT department, especially. That'll help out a lot.
Hey, Luke, are we, just another question. Are we hosting that here or is it hosting?
Nobody hosts it.
Okay.
Okay. We have one other bid waiver ordinance. And that's on two items in our fire department. And talk to Marvin about these two items and I will entertain a motion on this one.
Make a motion that we put it on its reading by Tyloin.
I have a motion in second, put it on its reading by Tyloin. Okay, we can go into discussion now. Marvin, if you want to talk a little bit about what these reasoning behind this.
Okay, yes. First one, the headsets. It's a headset for engines. The cordless headsets cuts the noise down. The guys can, they can hear, they can talk to each other. They can hear the dispatcher talking a lot better. But they don't hear the sirens and the all the noise of the, of the, of the emergency vehicle. Same here, and it also protects the pump operator. The big cordless, while he's standing there on the pump panel and all, it protects his, protects his hearing. And he can also hear what's going on on the scene rather than having a radio on on the icon all. So we're requesting for four, be for four engines, it was four. We may come back next year for, for rescue trucks and all. We're kind of seeing how this is going to work out. But we think it's a real, a real need in the department for our guys. And the other one is the cascade system. That's what we fill our air pack with. For years, we've had one downtown, the one we've got about twelve years old. Matter of fact, it went out the past summer. We had to, we got by fine because we asked the bar if we needed one, we were going to use the rural departments. And they were good to help us out. But this one here, we're going to put it in station two. One we've got here already, but put this in the station two. That we do all our training and stuff to back up and let's go on air ball.
What care of these? My, a certain supplier?
Yes, the, the thing we get into quite a bit is with the fire services, we specialize in, and it's all regional. It's like the cascade system is too Scott. That's, we can't give it. That's the only supplier that sells in this region. Same thing with the, with the headsets. It's the only supplier that sells in this region. So they've, you know, we have to go with them. So that's the only, and we ran into this before with our rescue equipment and all. It's all, it's all specialized equipment. This is nothing new.
Any other question or discussion on this issue? I'll have the clerk call real quick.
Mary Jean Krieger? Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
David Wilson?
Yes.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
An ordinance approving waiver of bidding for specialty fire department equipment.
Motion to adopt.
I have a motion in a second for adoption. Any discussion on this? There being none, you have to call Rome. I don't know on that one.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
David Wilsons?
Yes.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay. We will have to have an adopt emergency clause on this. You need to do.
If, if we can get by next month, so we can do that.
Well, I said we're here. Might as well just go ahead and do it. I'll entertain a motion to adopt emergency. Okay, I have a motion in second. Any discussion on this? So, any other discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Motion carried. I'd say this meeting is getting a little long, folks. We're starting to talk a little bit, so.
You haven't got to visit all month.
I know, I know. That's great. That's great. Okay. We'll move down into some of my comments. I just wanted to comment on a couple, about two or three items. We have received a two thousand dollar grant from Walmart.
For what?
Okay. Anyway, they will be for TVs in this room. And we can't watch ballgames or anything like that. They're only going to be for information. There are going to be information of where we can do power points and, and do different things and put, Jeff's going to put pictures up there and things like that. It'll be part of our IT upgrade. We got two thousand dollars. We're actually looking, several people have looked at this. We're looking to put one seventy inch right up here, big flat screen, seventy inch. And probably two tildings, fifty-five inch ones off of those posts out there where we can, audience and everybody else can see them. But Walmart graciously gave us a grant for that. And we will have, once we get them and get them up, we will have here, have them here recognized. But I wanted to bring that up because we did, we've already gotten a check. Just took a bit, a little while to get that check after we wrote in for the grant. But I wanted to thank them very, very much for that. Okay, I have also some appointments to make. And I don't know how this happened, but after I started checking appointments for, for commissions this year, but in the planning commission, I have four, three of them come up at the same time, but they are, they're up. And I'd like to reappoint those three people, Mr. Bob Dodson, Mr. Floyd Baltimore, and Mr. Pat Brown back to that commission for four-year terms. And I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
All second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on any of these? There being none, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Okay. You should have received some little pamphlets there, little FOI pamphlets. Can you read those? If you've got any questions about those items in that FOI, because a lot of you are familiar with it. Mr. James White is here tonight, and you can contact him at any time, and he will be your handle. Also, you should have another sheet there from Mr. Henson. And he wanted to kind of push that out to y'all too. He brought those in my office, and I thought I might pass them out to your county. Okay, I actually, I went to the municipal meeting this, this month. And this meeting is somewhat for new officials, and y'all, some of you have gone to those. They wasn't a lot. I will tell you that a lot of the things that were brought up are waiting on the federal government. Right now, everything is kind of halfway in limbo. Depending what's going to happen to different organizations, especially on our DOTs and a lot of litigation. So there is, I think, one thousand and four bills for the, that they're working on right now within our state. If anybody wants to get on the line, they're more than glad, or come to my office, I'd be more than glad to let you read. But anyway, it was a pretty good meeting. Like I say, most of it was geared towards new officials. But we'll have another meeting this summer, and I'd like to see something to go because I believe it or not, a lot of cities take, their whole counties are down there. And I know a lot of you work, and it takes up a lot of time, and sometimes those meetings are boring, but they're pretty informative. Some of you have gone. Mary Jean, I had to wake you up a couple times. But anyway.
I brought a fund and you have to tie something.
Anyway.
I'm sorry, that was a weird.
Okay. They are good meetings, and this league does a lot for us. They help us a lot. We're, we're tied to them pretty, pretty good, especially in our legal department and finances and different things like that. We for sure want to support them.
I'd be interested if you could, when you get the dates, the next one's on.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, we can push that out.
Should be in June.
Yeah, should be.
Middle of June.
And then Mary Jean always says how's the stakes down here?
Yeah, that's me. Yeah, that's Dan, because when you put your Dan, and you cannot eat all your steak, he'll eat the rest of it for you. He likes me to go.
Okay, next month, I will tell, I will inform everybody that next month's agenda is already starting to fill up, and most of that we'll probably be able to cover in our committee meetings. And we'll, yeah, we'll think. We don't normally have meetings like this, and hopefully we'll have another one, but we have a lot of things going on in our city, and it's, sometimes it'll take a little time to get things done. That's just part of, part of life, and we wanna do the best job we can. I don't know if you, you two new guys, uh, you may not come back next meeting, but, uh, we appreciate you being here. Okay, I'm gonna open it up to council at this time, if anybody, anybody on the council has anything to say.
Good news again on the financials, fantastic cities in the black, two years in a row. I want to thank the command department, employees of the city, for all the work they do.
We've been saying all along, we've been trying to get to that six month, I, and whenever you do, uh, reserve balance, you don't really look at a number, you look at how many months you can survive, if, for some reason, we had a big disaster come in, and we. We've been trying to hit six months for a long time now, and we've finally done it this past year, so, um, at, at this point, whatever else, um, comes in, or, you know, we, we feel very confident that we can handle whatever could be thrown, whether it be a, a steam a disaster or anything like that, so.
Thank you, man.
I'd like to thank the police department and all those that helped in the search this week for suspects that was at large, um, and I would encourage those that are out there, their whole, uh, negative feelings toward him, to focus your thoughts more on the two children that were affected by this. They have done an excellent job in my school, we have been locked down all week, um, and they've done an excellent job keeping us safe, secure, nurturing environment, and they've done an excellent job, and those babies are gonna live forever without a mom and a dad. And so you need to be thinking of them.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll open up to, to, uh, audience or general public, uh, if anybody, anybody would like to say a few words, or, at this time, it'd be more than welcome to step up there and say something. Uh, I can't say we're all asleep, but we're not yet, so.
I'm awake.
Okay, if anybody does not have anything to say, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Motion, all in favor?